We'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Slane Area Schools Board of Education for Tuesday, October 14th, 2014. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just one quick announcement before we get going here. We are going to have a closed session, and we're going to take it during the middle of the meeting. And it's for a legal matter regarding the potential sale of the Houghton property. So we will recess the meeting. We'll let everybody stay here. The Board will go. We'll go down to Superintendent Graydon's conference room. We anticipate that will be short, probably about 15 minutes, maybe 20 max. And then we'll come back and reconvene the meeting. And there's a potential that the Board will act on that issue at that time. This is the point of the meeting where members of the audience can address the Board for up to three minutes. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the Board this evening? Superintendent Graydon?
I have a few updates tonight. One, just Director of Facilities, Mr. Clary, sent our notice today just reminding us internally of some of the things associated with prevention of, you know, certainly the entrovirus D68, and for that matter even Ebola. But he talked about, obviously, we have experienced custodial staff that are essentially wiping, you know, the specific areas of concern for us can daily use hospital-grade disinfectants to neutralize the solution or the protection viruses that we're talking about. We are stressing as well that we wash hands often, use hand sanitizer, avoid touching eyes, knows about this is kind of the season that we've seen a fair amount of illness in their district. So again, making sure that we're trying to address those things as proactively as possible. Next week, on Wednesday, the 22nd, in the morning, I will be attending a panel discussion on K-12 education in this area. We'll be presenting to employees of the Toyota company who are moving from a facility in North Kentucky to here. They're expanding by about 250 employees in New York Township site. And so it's an opportunity for us to, again, make sure they're considering Slane Area Schools as a potential destination as they relocate. 500 or so employees are transitioning from there. Half are going to Plano, Texas, and half are coming to this facility. So it's an opportunity for us to make sure that we'll consider that a location for them. The Germans are coming. As I think somebody forwarded an email out, Froch, Schuster, it has a group of 20 German students coming a week from, they're coming actually next week, this coming weekend. Next Monday, the 20th, at 7:15 in the high school commons, there will be a kind of a welcome breakfast for the students that will be here. They will only be attending school on three or four different days. However, they'll be doing a variety of things, tours. And then we will have students going to Germany later on after the, at the end of the year. Our next-generation classrooms continue to be a draw. We had South Haven Schools within the district on Friday, looking at those and learning more about those. And we've been asked by the Michigan Association of School Administrators to present about the, those next-generation classrooms at the Midwinter Conference in January. So we look forward to that opportunity as well to share information about that, those projects. This Saturday, so you were, Bob and Pam Phillips are, we're hosting a tribute concert to them. They've contributed a great deal of time, energy, effort, talent to the Slane area community, Slane area schools, and have benefited greatly from their involvement with us in terms of particularly our fiddling programs and our orchestra programs. And they will be having a performance, and we will be having a performance on behalf of current and former students who will be participating in that, and we're looking forward to that. I will be making some comments along with Superintendent, former Superintendent Ellen Ewing. And we both are fortunate because the district director was retired between her tenure and my tenure, so none of us were around, but he actually had to leave. So that's our claim to fame. Coming up, a week from Friday, we have our homecoming football game and homecoming festivities. The following Friday, it's likely that we will be, not only will it be Friday, Halloween, the 31st, but we'll likely be hosting a football game. So be aware of that. And then November 4th is Election Day. There are four open seats for candidates running. I do notice that Mr. Austin is here, one of the candidates. And so we won't be having another regular meeting before that, but three weeks from tonight, we'll be having Election Day. Those are my comments.
Excellent. Board members? Chair? Anything from the student side?
No, I'm here.
Just a couple of things briefly, as Superintendent Graydon mentioned. Mr. Tim Austin is here tonight, will most likely be joining the Board in January since he's unopposed. And so we look forward to you joining the Board in January and adding your skill set to the Board. You'll be a valuable addition to us. Also, I had breakfast with Representative Adam Zemke yesterday. I did send out an email to the Board, kind of recapping that conversation. He indicated that during lame duck, there's a good probability that the teacher evaluation legislation will be passed. That's like number three on the list. Rhodes is number one. I can't remember what is number two. But then teacher evaluations is right there. So we should hopefully see some action out of Lansing on that. And he's been very intricate in the development of that legislation, has solicited our opinions through that process on that, and hopefully we'll take that one across the line. He also indicated that expansion of the sinking fund is still out there. Of course, we know what lame duck is like. It can get chaotic, and he didn't give any assurances, but it'll get its fair bearing there, certainly for use for information technology and also for safety and security upgrades. And then with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So move? Chief, do you have a second?
Second.
And Trustee Prees has a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will also just state that Trustee Fonis and Trustee Carter are not with us tonight. Their day jobs have taken them out of town and are unable to attend this evening. Scheduled reports, we have the Slane High School Choir in the building tonight.
I'd like to introduce Miss Price. She's in her second year here and has brought a group to perform with us and talk a little bit about an opportunity that they are, they have this coming spring.
Hi, thanks so much for having us tonight. I'm so excited to be here myself with Selene, who's the high school director. These are the ten children of this facility. Exciting year already starting. We've got a new night-happy choir going during the day. Two new students run acapella groups. There's a new ensemble going, this is the Ten Kings, who are select acapella group. They were there six weeks in the morning. It's been nice and early. And we do classic repertoire, a lot of fun pop stuff. The exciting new gig we just got, our chamber girls were asked to sing at the Detroit Opera House production of The Nutcracker, which is Thanksgiving, so we're singing in Detroit. And our favorite gig this year is in a Carnegie Hall. And that's going to be over our spring break. We're taking 32 singers to New York City and kind of residency there, singing with a couple hundred singers from all over the country, along with a fabulous conductor that I know from my time at M.S. U. And there's a press release actually on the table, if anyone would want to know. We're going to be performing one of our pieces that we'll be also doing at our upcoming concerts during the first week of November, performing on November 2nd with the Selene New Horizons Band for a Veterans Day concert. And then the same week on the sixth, we'll be doing our own fall combined concert with the middle schools of Rhode Island, Maryland, and Connecticut. And we'll be performing the Venus Shaker tune, Simple Gifts. Michelle. Michelle. I messaged her from here. I think you got it from the booth.
The gift to be simple, the gift to be free. The gift to be simple is the gift to be free. The gift to content, free. The gift to ourselves be just right. Twill be in the valley of love and delight. When true simplicity is gave, you bow and you bend, we shan't be ashamed. Turn to the ante, watch the light shine. The gift to be simple, the gift to be free. The gift to be simple is the gift to be free. The gift to content, free. The gift to ourselves be just right. Twill be in the valley of love and delight. The gift to be simple, the gift to be free. The gift to be simple, the gift to be free. The gift to be simple, the gift to be free.
Thank you very much. We have three action items this evening. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Superintendent Performance Evaluation Memorandum from Secretary Heineck outlining the $3,053.70 payout for goal attainment, as well as approval of the Superintendent's 2014-2015 goals. So move? Chief, do you have a second? Second from Trustee Delhay. Paul, you want to just give a brief recap?
Sure. You should have. I passed out the memorandum. Last year's Superintendent Graydon's goals were to negotiate collective bargaining agreements with all bargaining units and to develop the comprehensive five-year plan for the strategic plan. When we did his evaluation, he scored 73.3% on goal number one, so no payout was warranted since it needs to meet a 75% level for attainment. On goal number two, his overall rating was a 78.3%, so his payout was the $3,053.70. He has chosen to contribute some of that money to his self-savings account, which is a wise move, and establish a personal Roth IRA account with the remaining amount of that incentive payout. Next year, his goal number one, which is weighted at 30%, will be to develop and implement the budget that achieves at least a 1.75% gain in fund balance. And goal number two, which is weighted at 70%, is to maintain and revise the five-year plan for the strategic framework goals. We weighted this at 70% because we are driven by our strategic plan and we think that we'll be successful. Since last year was only a six-month period, his total eligible was only, not only was, $6,500. Next year, because it's a full-year incentive period, he is eligible to earn $8,000. And the same rules apply, waiting for 30, 70, and he must obtain a 75% rating for any payout. And then on the last page, it's an addendum to his contract that reflects the goals for 2014, 2015. And questions?
I'd like to thank Secretary Heineck for putting this together. When we renewed Superintendent Graydon's agreement, part of it is we wanted to introduce variable compensation as part of his overall compensation. And it's really a direction that we want to go to across the district over time. And we did achieve some of that when we negotiated the ESP and the administrators' agreement, that there is a portion there that if we get an increase in our fund allowance, some of that will go to those bargaining groups, not necessarily based on merit, like it is in Superintendent Graydon's contract. So I think as we move forward, this is something that we're going to want to further develop. We're kind of using the Superintendent as kind of a test case on this, but we think it's in the best long-term interest of the district.
Test case we prefer now.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or comments from Board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the financing of Apple laptops in the amount of $180,775.40. This amount was previously approved as part of an installment purchase agreement with US Bancorp, but due to circumstances must now be financed separately. So move? Secretary Heineck and a second from Vice President Heft.
Largely, as a note given in the motion, this is really, has been previously approved. We just need to put it out, but since it's in excess of the bid amount, we need to bring it back to the Board.
Okay. Just saying. Any change in the interest rate financing?
The terms are all the same as, no, the terms are exactly as we had gotten from US Bancorp. Apple just didn't want to sign the documentation. They didn't like that package. And so they proposed financing at themselves. Apple's in terms.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to certify all Board members as Michigan Association for School Board delegates for the 2014-15 school year. Motion by Trustee Delhay? Second from Secretary Heineck. I think this is one of these yearly formalities that we do basically to say, we do have the State Convention coming up in November, right after, I think it's right after the election, that weekend. And I know Trustee Fonis has expressed an interest in attending. I don't know if any other Board members want to hop in on that. Certainly, they're more than welcome to do so.
To kind of jump in there a little bit, the Superintendent Association is advocating that the Michigan Association of School Boards eventually move their annual conference. The November date, right around the election time, doesn't work now as well with the timeline associated with elections, so there's likelihood that they'll be moving to a February window so that those Board members that are seated in January, officers are elected in January, et cetera, will be able to attend a February meeting moving forward. So that's likely to happen over the next couple of years in how many contracts they have with the convention associations.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by Board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board with the intent to reopen or re-enter open session at 7:20, or 7:10 PM. And the purpose is for the attorney plaintiff privilege related to the potential sale of the Houghton property. Do we have a motion on that? Trustee Delhay? Second from Vice President Heft. This requires a roll call vote. Trustee Fonis is absent. Trustee Prees?
Yes.
Vice President Heft?
Yes.
President Bolden, yes. Secretary Heineck?
Yes.
Trustee Carter is absent. Trustee Delhay? So we will exit the room at this point. Let the record show that we re-entered open session at 7:15. At this time, I would like to make a motion, and I will read the entire resolution. Whereas the district owns approximately 10.07 acres of real property located at 555 Mill Street within the city of Selene, Washtenaw County, Michigan, also referred to as the Houghton property. Whereas the Board has determined that the property is no longer necessary for school purposes, and whereas the district has received an offer to purchase the property. Whereas the Board has determined that it would be in the best interest of the district to sell the property upon terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement, which is attached hereto, and made a part hereof of Attachment A purchase agreement, subject to review and approval by the district's legal counsel. And whereas the Board desires to authorize and direct Superintendent Graydon or his designate to execute the purchase agreement substantially in the form as Attachment A, and to make any revisions to the purchase agreement not inconsistent with this resolution, and to take any other action to sell the property as provided in this resolution, subject to review and approval by the district's legal counsel. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the Board hereby authorizes the sale of the property upon the terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement. Two, the Board authorizes and directs Superintendent Graydon to execute the purchase agreement substantially in the form as Attachment A, and to make any revisions to the purchase agreement not inconsistent with this resolution, and to take any other action to sell the property as provided in this resolution, subject to review and approval by the district's legal counsel. Third, all resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same, are hereby rescinded. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second and five, Secretary Heineck. Superintendent Graydon?
As you recall, the process associated with kind of dispersing of the Houghton School property began back in the spring, where we solicited kind of proposals associated with the property to determine the relative value, but also to beat some of our clearly defined goals associated with developing it in a residential format that will provide, hopefully, for student enrollment to occur. In doing so, we had two proposals. We reviewed those with the ad hoc committee of the Board, and have since been working with our legal counsel to craft a purchase agreement that kind of meets those goals, not only maximizing the initial revenues with the sale of the property, but also making sure that the type of development is consistent with the type of development that we bring young families to Slane Area Schools into our residence. So I think we've got a proposal and a purchase agreement that does accomplish most of those things. It calls for an initial payment, I mean, of $381,000. With additional payments, we could realize up to $1 million for the property. So I think it's a unique opportunity. I applaud the Board for being creative and thinking a little bit differently about how we can maximize the value, as well as the long-term residual value of encouraging young families to move to Slane.
Any other questions or comments by Board members? I'd like to thank the administration for their work on this. Secretary Heineck and Trustee Fonis and myself were kind of the subcommittee that when we were entertaining the offers as they came in. Also, our legal counsel for the work that they've done on this. Also, the real estate community, because there is a kind of unique aspect to this agreement to where we will share in the profit of the homes above a certain price level. So we vetted that out with the real estate community. They were very helpful in us coming to that conclusion. And then also the city, Mayor Marl and city manager, Tom Campell, certainly were influential and have been partners in this. So this is a significant night in the sale of that property. We believe that we've maximized the revenue for the school district. We also feel that it's at a price point that will attract families into Selene. So it's our hope and expectation that we'll be able to have potentially up to 40 new students come out of that development. So in a sense, that property becomes an ongoing annuity for the school district. So I think we've accomplished just about everything that we set out to do when we decided that we were going to put that property up for sale. Any other questions or comments from Board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items. We have three this evening.
Wanted to, I wanted to talk a little bit about student enrollment. As you know, last week, we, it was, two weeks ago now, was our student count day and our fall head count. I, again, caution, it's somewhat of a preliminary fall head count. There's an automated process that takes place, so I don't want to get too tied up in that. But I provided the Board with the three documents associated with that. One is our historical K-12 enrollment, 2006 to 2013, really the last seven years, and then some essentially enrollment projections using the cohort survival method, which is a process that Plant, Moran, and Cressa uses to determine where we should be at based on our demographics and based on our historical. We call it cohort survival. It's really about how many students are enrolled in third grade one year that are enrolled in fourth grade the next year. So we really look at that and try to determine what is typical, what is average for our community, as well as analyzing kind of our demographics, our birth rate, and other factors associated with economics of Michigan. You know, on a positive note, we've been outperforming those historical demographics or the projections they've been making. However, it's, I want to be clear, it's, we're outperforming them, but the trend lines are the same. They predicted us to go down relatively, or fairly significantly. We've not gone down as significant. However, we are continuing to trend kind of parallel to that in a downward trajectory. Couple of notes about this, our current enrollment. One is we have 317 kindergarteners that have enrolled for this fall. Of that 317, or that 317 number is the lowest student count for kindergarten class since 1999-98. Essentially, our current junior class would be born the last time we had a kindergarten class this size. If you dig a little bit deeper, of that 317 students, 46 of those are school of choice students. So which means our natural, kind of our Selene resident number is 261. For 261, you have to go back to 93-94. To get to that, the last time we had a number that low was 93-94. So we're talking really, essentially, a 20-year issue in terms of our kindergarten class size. In 1998, when we had enrolled 306 kindergarteners, we graduated 321 seniors. We are now graduating in the neighborhood of 450 to 460. And so as you can see, when we're enrolling historically low elementary or kindergarten numbers and we're graduating, you know, the classes that came in in that mid-400 range, there's a gap there. The last time we had this low resident enrollment kindergarten, our graduating class in 1993-94 was 225. So again, I want people in our, the Board, to understand, while we are, you know, we see the economy turning around, we see the housing market, we're taking, you know, essentially proactive stance and try and encourage housing development, the issue underlying this may not be our housing stock solely. It's largely the function of where we're at in the district in terms of our enrollment. We're top-heavy with three levels. Our highest, you know, essentially, our largest grade levels are grade seven and up. You know, we tell the classes that we currently have at our elementary level, matriculate up, and we start to get to a scenario where we're graduating closer to that 420, 430 range. And depending on our scenario, if we can encourage the enrollment at the kindergarten level to get to the 330 to 350 range, that allows that natural kind of destination school growth that occurs for us between the grades of one and 11 to allow us to kind of get to that stable point. So I think that, you know, as we dig into these numbers, it's important to really think about where we're going as a district. I think we've done some things related to dispersing of two facilities now, Union School and Houghton School, looking at kind of how we're going as a district to say, this is probably the size we're going to be for the foreseeable future, if not trending down slightly to that anywhere from 5,000 to 4,800 students. You know, our high watermark, we have the same number of students enrolled today as we did in the fall of 2003. So you can rewind 11 years and say with the exact same size. Our high watermark is 2006, and we've been trending down really for the last seven years. So it's important information to know, we're outperforming Plant, Moran, however, I want to be very clear that, you know, the idea that kind of it's going to turn around and we're going to see a spike enrollment unless we see that kindergarten level jump, there's no real opportunity.
Yeah. You know, I think part of it is, is it's part of the cycle of the community. You know, I think part of it is, it's part of the cycle of the community. And, you know, I've been here 20 years, and all three of my boys are gone now. They've gone through the school district. When I look around the neighborhood, you know, I don't see the number of kids that were there, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago. You know, a couple of things we do have going for us, you know, as the economy does rebound, I think a lot of people who were stuck in their houses are now hopefully getting unstuck, and so we'll start to see the trending of housing stock again. And I think that's critical in a community, that you have that turnover, that, you know, as people like myself age and don't have schoolchildren anymore, that, you know, I kind of move out, another family moves in, and we've seen that in our neighborhood a little bit. So we need that. I think, you know, housing starts are up, which is good. But I think there's limitations on that. I think in a lot of ways, we're maturing as a community in terms of our build-out. And so I think the expectation is moving forward is that, you know, we will shrink as a district. And that's a challenge. That's a challenge. I mean, it's easy to manage, I think, when you're growing. It's much more challenging when you're shrinking, especially when you want to continue to offer quality educational services in a shrinking environment. I think over the next five to 10 years, that's really going to be the challenge for the board and the administration is to be able to manage that.
How was, with those numbers, how is class size stable?
It's relatively stable. I don't know, Steve, if you want to, you know, our kindergarten size class are a little bit higher than they were the last, at least the last two years. It really goes back to about two or three years ago in terms of the 25. But one of the things, kindergarten, the issue, the nice thing about Celine is by the time they get to fourth grade, we're all in one building and really balance class size. K-3, it's, we're neighborhood-driven, and so we balance that, I think, plus a bridge this year. Kindergarten is a little bit higher than other different communities or other buildings. But, you know, we're within, you know, from our own estate and within our contract and everything. I do want to touch base real quick about kind of the impact of school of choice. As you know, last year, we passed a kind of a cap on school of choice. Or we shouldn't say school of choice, really just non-resident. We currently have this fall about 418 non-resident students enrolled, which really comprises about eight percent of the school district. And so, one, to just to put that into perspective, one, you know, we have about two percent that we could potentially add next year, and so we have that 10% number. But as that net number continues to decline, that percentage declines. We are now graduating non-resident students, so there'll be some, it's ultimately just kind of churn that could take place. So just be aware of that. We had about 120 students who applied for school of choice, and we enrolled 71 of those students. And so we did have students that wanted to come, but we chose not to enroll. Again, if we try to balance that scenario, we did encourage and try to get as many kindergartners as we could. We knew we were going to be a little bit low there. We had 56 apply, 46.
Any other questions or comments on student enrollment? Policy committee update?
We are meeting next Tuesday at 5:00.
Tuesday at 5:00?
Yep.
Very good. Budget committee update?
We are meeting next Thursday, the 23rd, at 5:00.
Yep. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through E as part of the consent agenda. So move. Vice President Heft, with a second from?
Second.
Trustee Pries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items scheduled on the next agenda, which will be our work session. We're going to have the people from Plant, Moran in with our annual audit report. So that'll probably consume the entire.
The patrol, yeah. We also want to talk then about the current 2014-2015 budget. You know, one of the things that I did, you know, we did budget down 20, so we anticipated a slight decline. We exceeded that, but we're down 37, so we're going to talk over the bottom of it.
Did I miss something? Is there something you want to add?
Bummer, I have to miss that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right. Good job, yeah. We will send you the report, and there will be a quiz. This is the second opportunity for members of the audience to address the board for up to three minutes. I see that Mayor Marl has joined us. Mr. Mayor, would you have a few words to say?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Holden. Good evening, Brian Marl, 220 West Russell Street, mayor of the great city of Celine. I apologize for my tardiness this evening, but I wanted to come and thank you for your leadership on the Hope School property issue. As many of you may recall, I sent an email to you all this past spring articulating a number of concerns that had been expressed to me by the residents of the area about the state of the property, the condition, and the impact it had on the overall character of the community. And I was proud of you for taking the step to authorize the demolition. I thought that was a very professional demolition project. But I'm more pleased that tonight you've authorized the sale of the property to a very well-regarded, well-established developer who we at the city of Celine have had a long working relationship with. I know we'll work fabulously with him, and we'll continue to work with you all to bring new houses online and to bring families to our community. It's not only good for the school district, but it will also have a profound benefit to the city as well. So I'm very excited with this progress, and again, I want to thank you for your leadership and vision on this issue. Thanks so much.
Thanks for being our partner through this. We've worked hand in glove with the city throughout this whole process. We still got to do a little zoning there, but approval of site plans and that, and I'm sure that'll proceed in an orderly fashion. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to address the board this evening? Okay, our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 28, 2014, at 6:30, right here at Liberty. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Chief, with a second from the board. Secretary Heine, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?